Well, good morning, everyone. It is absolutely lovely to see everyone. It's just what a pleasure. This is our last council meeting and it's such a special day today. Thank you all for coming. Nice to see everyone's lovely faces here in the gallery. I will call the meeting to order at 9:01 a.m. And I will ask everyone to stand for the singing of our national anthem. Are there any additions to the agenda this morning?
Administration has no additions. Thanks.
Any from council? Is there a member of council that would like to approve the agenda for the October 8th, 2025 regular meeting of council? Councilor Gomana, thank you very much. All in favor? That is carried. Any corrections or amendments to the September 24th, 2025 regular meeting of council? Is there a member of council that would like to approve them? Councilor McGee, thank you for that. All in favor? That is carried. We have no proclamations, no public hearing, but we have one very special delegation this morning in recognition of Ms. Barty Calusa. Good morning again, everyone. Welcome. It's so lovely to see you all. It is with my great pleasure to recognize a remarkable member of our community, Barty. Your years of service, leadership, and compassion have left a lasting impact on Drayton Valley and was the recent recipient of the Alberta Immigration Impact Award for the province of Alberta. For 35 years, Barty has been a driving force in our community for inclusion, connection, and community spirit. Her passion for helping newcomers find their place in Drayton Valley has changed countless lives and strengthened the very fabric of our town. Barty played a vital role in the creation of the Drayton Valley Multicultural Association. This is an organization that continues to support and celebrate the diversity of our community today. She has also taught the 100 Kitchen Ethnic Cooking in Easy Ford, and she has also been deeply involved in efforts to improve local health care through the doctor recruitment program. And she's dedicated her time to supporting children with special needs through the Aim for Success program. Her leadership and creativity shine through in every project that she takes on, from launching her Chit Chat with Barty program to starting the Go Green Initiative, which brought environmental awareness to local schools and not-for-profits long before sustainability became a community thing. Barty truly embodies what it means to serve others. She leads with kindness. She leads with her heart. She steps up where there is a need, and she continues to inspire all those around her. On behalf of Town Council in the town of Drayton Valley, Barty, I want to thank you for everything that you do to our community, everything that you bring to our community. Being a recipient for the Alberta Immigration Impact Award is a reflection of your dedication, your leadership, and the difference that you've made in so many lives around you and in this community. Congratulations, and thank you for making Drayton Valley a stronger and more welcoming place for everyone. We'd love to get a little picture with you. Is it okay if I take everyone's pictures? If you want to come and get a picture with us, we would love that. First game of the season. Enjoy your day. It's always lovely. We get to celebrate the pillars and the individuals that make Drayton Valley what it is. So congratulations again to Ms. Barty for everything that she's done and continues to do in our community. So we'll jump right into our decision items. We have a pretty small agenda this morning. First up is 8.1. This is our Food Cycler Program. And I will hand it over to Ms. Alvera Thompson, I believe, is presenting.
Oh, it will be Mr. Hans Von Claveren.
Mr. Hans Von Claveren will be presenting.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor, and as Chair to the rest of council. Of course, I had to put on my jacket because it's the last time that we see you in this, let's say, setup. So thank you for all those years working with each other. Maybe I'm the only one saying that today, but I think everybody has that in their hearts, for sure. Food Cycler Program. So in 2022, we started our community trial for a food waste management solution by launching the Food Cycler Pilot Program with about 100 food cyclers units in participating households. In 2023, the town launched an expansion program to build on the initial pilot success, adding another extra 146 units. We have a strong commitment to the Food Cycler Program in our community embracing sustainability habits and innovative waste management solution. On August 19th this year, Christina Zardo from Food Cycler Science presented to the Sustainability Committee updates related to the Food Cycler Program and options for our municipality to continue and grow the program. The Sustainability Committee members discussed the information. And the key point is the option for the town to consider an enhanced program incentive to get more food cyclers in residents' homes. Higher program participation aims to achieve even more positive impacts to food waste reduction and environmental sustainability. The long-term financial picture shows a positive end result based on lower landfill expenses. The presentation or the presented information was attached in the documentation for this meeting. At the Sustainability Committee meeting, it was raised that this enhanced program project would be brought to council for consideration and information. The crux to the proposal is the financial incentive, the long-term vision, and the role the municipality plays in that proposal. Members of council on the Sustainability Committee can likely provide some further information and clarification on this. And I hope that they can support that when there's questions coming. But of course, we can have a representative of the food cycling science come to council if they want further information later on. The Sustainability Committee recommends that council consider today the opportunity to direct administration to bring the Enhanced Food Cycler Program to the Budget 2026 deliberations for further discussion and direction. As I said, the crux of the program enhancement is a direct support by the town to a total of $847,500 over several years. There are two options presented to do that. This will give residents an initial cost-free food recycler in their home. The town expense will be offset by reduced waste management or landfill expenses over time. Town administration currently handles the Food Cycler Program. A new and higher uptake of the program will see a slight increase in staff time needed and efforts to deliver this service, but that can be done with the current resources. So the recommendation supported by the Sustainability Committee is that council direct administration to bring the initiative of supporting and enhancing the Food Cycler Program to the Budget 2026 deliberations for consideration and direction. Alternatively, if council takes this information today for information only, it means there is no direction to take any further action on this initiative. And administration will inform Food Cycler Science about this, of course. We still will promote and find homes for the remaining food cyclers that we currently have. If there's any other questions, I hope Councilor Evans and Clark can support providing answers.
Thank you very much for that. And if you have any questions, they're going to be directed right to Colin and Rick. So lots of questions.
I know some things as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Hans. Any questions for administration this morning? Councilor Gomana?
Thank you for the information and good morning, everyone. Just from my understanding, how many more units remaining from the previous round?
Thank you for that question. So currently, we have just over 100, I think 104.
Right.
In the meantime, it might be a little bit lower because we still sell them to people that are coming forward. But it's about 100 of the initial 500 that we still have.
And the proposal is to get more?
The proposal is to get over the coming years, in three years or seven, if that's spread out a little bit more, of food recyclers to every household. So that's about 2,500 extra to up to our almost 3,000 households in Drayton Valley.
So again, just from my understanding, I think this is a great program. But when I was door knocking, there was a couple of questions about this program, mentioning that, you know, is this funded by taxpayer money? And is this needed and all of that, right? So just for my understanding as well as the understanding of the committee members, could you explain how the funding part works?
Yes, I can. And then I will look to the councillors to help me out here. So the first pilot project was a subsidized purchase by residents, $100 subsidized by the town. Of course, that's town money. Let's say residents' ratepayers' money. This would be an outright payment by the town. So basically, an outright subsidization of the full $339 per unit. People get it in their household. That means the reduction of fees that we need for tipping the landfill over time and the tonnage that is saved by going in there. That will save the community, the town, over time more than the initial investment of about $850,000. So it's an outright purchase by the town to get those recyclers in people's homes at no cost. And the money back is an overtime reduction of the fees that we have to pay for the landfill because we bring less to the landfill.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I think that information probably need to be distributed to the community in a concise way as well so they would understand why we are doing this and if we are going ahead with this, right? So but it's coming to the next budget cycle, I believe, right? It's probably up to the next council to approve it beyond this point.
Correct. So right now, with this information known and the support of the Sustainability Committee, the question is, shall administration be directed today to bring it to the deliberations? So as a project to council to be decided during the budget process? If this council says, don't bring it, we won't. So basically, the project is done. We finished the current project. But if this council says, yes, let's bring it at that moment during the deliberations, the council at that time will have the opportunity to go with the project as a budget item.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that. So yeah, in my mind, I think we should bring it. And it's up to the next council to decide if it's going ahead or not. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And then just a note too, for when we kicked off this program, it was part of a grant, right? Yeah. Just so if you remember, or just if you're wanting to speak, yeah, mention that too. Councilor Evans, did you have a comment or question?
Yeah, I agree. It was part of a grant. I think we were subsidized and I don't know. The fact that we still have 100 sitting here, ready to go. I mean, there's nothing wrong with considering it at budget time for the next council. But to me, I'd wait a year and then see where we're at and see how many of the existing ones we've moved out. And if there's a demand for additional ones, then, you know, then at that point in time, council can talk to these folks again and line up some new ones. The new ones are a little larger, I believe. They've made a couple of minor improvements and stuff. Sorry, it was a little while ago when we got this presentation. So even though Hans is going to give me part of his pay for doing his job today. So yeah, that would be, I would go with the recommendation. But in the end, we still have 100 sitting on the shelf. So I don't think it's worthwhile stalking a few hundred of them and slowly running them out the door. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other questions? Councilor McGee?
Does anyone in the room have any experience with them? And?
They're great. Right now, mine's in my garage just because it was on my kitchen counter for quite some time. And it's really amazing. It's not as big as you would think. Like you put your waste in there, which is great, and it grinds it down like quite quick. And then I just kept saving these tubs of grind-down stuff that I was going to put on my lawn and in the garden. And then it just kept building up. And then I started giving it away to people. And then it got moved to my garage. But I do say I should start using it again because it does help with food waste, for sure. Like banana peels, potato peel when you peel potatoes, like everything.
I hope mine is making somebody else's house productive because I wasn't using it.
Yeah. Colin's been using his lots too, I know. Yes. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, to Councilor McGee. So according to the report that was presented, over 90% of the people that have been an early adopter, because you could say that, of course, the people that were enthusiastic in this pilot project still use it and have the intention to use it over time. So keep using it. So it's a high percentage of the current people that have been part of the pilot project that are enthusiastic, use it. And the question, if you ask that around, I know down here, staff members have it as well and are very well at first in using it. And it helps them grow the best tomatoes ever.
Oh, I didn't know that. Thank you for that. I'll have to remember that.
Testimonials, they always work.
They do work, yeah, and selling, right? That should be the headline for the food cycler. Grow the best tomatoes ever in the world. Any other questions? Okay. Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion? Go ahead, Councilor Clark. What would you like to make a motion on? On the record, yeah.
I will make the motion that council can direct administration to bring the initiative of supporting and enhancing the Food Cycler Program to the Budget 2026 deliberations for consideration and direction.
Thank you very much for that. Mr. Von Claveren?
Thank you, Chair. I would recommend to take the word "can" out because it was written as that could be a motion by council. But if it's made, take the word "can" out.
Oh, so.
Okay, let's strike "can" from the record there. Council will direct administration.
Council direct? Council direct administration? Yes. Thank you for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? My only comment would be similar to Councilor Evans that we believe we do have 100 food cyclers units still. I would say maybe, you know, do a few plugs out and why, you know, you should purchase one of these and the benefits of, you know, keeping the waste out of our landfill and growing the best tomatoes in the world. And then, yeah, bring it back for budget deliberations and see where it goes. Thank you for your work on this and for everything you do at the Sustainability, those councillors that are on and have served on the Sustainability Committee. There is a motion on the floor that council direct administration to bring the initiative of supporting and enhancing the Food Cycler Program to the Budget 2026 deliberations for consideration and direction. I'll now call the motion. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you very much for that. Next up this morning, we have 8.2, which is the Drayton Valley Strategic Financial Framework. And this is Ms. Thompson this morning.
Good morning. And I would echo Mr. Von Claveren's thoughts. I am sad that this current group will not be the same going forward. I'm sure we'll have many of you returning, but it's been nice working.
But not this good.
Not this good, right?
Sorry.
Not this combination, you know? It'll be a new combination of people.
Well, there is one seat. We could include you there so that we're not really segregating you, so.
We'll miss you, Councilor Evans and Councilor McGee. I'm sure of it. So we talked about this framework last week in GMP. I will go over my spiel again and I'll highlight current strategies, future strategies, and hope that council will accept this framework once I'm done with this presentation. So administration completed a framework that's designed to create a common understanding of the town's existing strategies by demonstrating how fiscal sustainability principles are applied and how these strategies support informed decision-making. The Strategic Financial Framework considers future financial challenges through agreed-upon principles, strategies, and processes with consideration for the long term. The implementation of the framework will guide the organization in making decisions necessary to plan for financial sustainability while maintaining a level of adaptability to help achieve council's strategic plan and visions. This document serves as a foundational guide that connects the town's existing financial policies, reports, plans, and day-to-day financial practices. It outlines the key principles that civicus administration follows in financial planning and decision-making. It is intended to complement, not replace, the town of Drayton Valley's existing financial policies, plans, and documents. So in summary, this document, we created this document so that there was common, one document where you could reference all the different strategies that the finance department takes to budget and to determine how to finance projects and how to apply for grants, when to apply for grants, and all that kind of stuff. And so most of these things, a lot of these things, well, we already do, day-to-day. This isn't saying that a lot of these things, it's not new strategies, although we do cover new strategies as well. But the idea being that this gives everyone a chance to look at them and to see them and to understand why and how we make decisions. And it's written in a way that anyone should be able to read it and understand why we do things the way we do them. And so I'm hoping that this will be ready and on the webpage for all the councillors running, all the candidates running for council. It'll give them a heads up or like a leg up on budgeting this year. If they're able to read these, they'll have the terminology and the understanding of municipal finance before our first budget sessions, which will be highly beneficial and I think a lot less frustrating for new members joining council. That's why the timing is the way it is. We wanted to make sure that this was in place before the election. And so I'll go over, we had discussed, council had brought some recommendations forward, some things they'd like to see in here or questions they had asked. So I'll highlight some of the strategies that we already follow and some of the changes I've made, not to our strategies, but to the document. And then I will highlight some of our key future strategies that we're hoping to implement. Of course, that's a conversation to be had with senior leadership and the CEO as well. So some of the key strategies that I have in here relate to how we budget, how we make decisions, how we do financial reporting, how we make sure that we manage the budget in a way that is responsible internally and also to the taxpayer. So what I mean by that is we had talked about global budgeting and where if a department manager is over-budget in one section of their budget, that they're able to manage that by making sure that they're under-budget in a different area of their own budget. And so I know there were some questions about how to make sure that the levels of service are still being delivered, that council directed through the budget, and how, but how we can also simultaneously encourage efficiencies. And so I added on page 50 is where the global budgeting comes into question. So I added some more specifics on that doesn't mean we can save in roads and sidewalks and use that in parks because that now shifts where the services are being delivered. So the global budgeting is supposed to be from one pocket or one area of the organization. So it would be if the Parks Department is slightly over on their repairs and maintenance, then they would try to save money in their P&amp;G Professional and General Services to balance that out. That's what that's supposed to accomplish. And I've also added a bunch of details on what the ways a municipality can encourage efficiencies without, while still making sure that the levels of services are being maintained and so that we don't have managers trying to save money by changing the level of service that they are committed to by council's budget. Absolutely.
Go ahead, Councilor McGee.
The, what comes to my mind is there was some criticism way back when I was the mayor that, and I think it was criticism that was warranted, where we would use funds from our utilities and we would, you know, take our, I'm forgetting the name of where we receive money from the utility companies, what?
Franchise fees?
Yeah, the franchise fees. And then we would plop that into wherever it became that sort of a bit of a fund to move around. And I think that was a sort of a general occurrence. And so are you suggesting that that can no longer happen?
Correct. That's what I'm suggesting. I am, but with a, you know, franchise fees, investment income. So the best practice is that an inconsistent form of revenue that could go away should not be used for general operations because that then, if we're.
how to apply for grants, when to apply for grants, and all that kind of stuff. And so, most of these things, a lot of these things, well, we already do, day-to-day. This isn't saying that, a lot of these things, it's not new strategies, although we do cover new strategies as well. But the idea being that this gives everyone a chance to look at them and to see them and to understand why and how we make decisions. And it's written in a way that anyone should be able to read it and understand why we do things the way we do them. And so, I'm hoping that this will be ready and on the webpage for all the councilors running, all the candidates running for council. It'll give them a heads up or like a leg up on budgeting this year. If they're able to read these, they'll have the terminology and the understanding of municipal finance before our first budget sessions, which will be highly beneficial and I think a lot less frustrating for new members joining council. That's why the timing is the way it is. We wanted to make sure that this was in place before the election. And so, I'll go over, we had discussed, council had brought some recommendations forward, some things they'd like to see in here or questions they had asked. So I'll highlight some of the strategies that we already follow and some of the changes I've made, not to our strategies but to the document. And then I will highlight some of our key future strategies that we're hoping to implement. Of course, that's a conversation to be had with senior leadership and the CEO as well. So, some of the key strategies that I have in here relate to how we budget, how we make decisions, how we do financial reporting, how we make sure that we manage the budget in a way that is responsible internally and also to the taxpayer. So what I mean by that is, we had talked about global budgeting and where if a department manager is over-budget in one section of their budget, that they're able to manage that by making sure that they're under-budget in a different area of their own budget. And so I know there were some questions about how to make sure that the levels of service are still being delivered, that council directed through the budget, and how, but how we can also simultaneously encourage efficiencies. And so I added on page 50 is where the global budgeting comes into question. So I added some more specifics on, that doesn't mean we can save in roads and sidewalks and use that in parks, because that now shifts where the services are being delivered. So the global budgeting is supposed to be from one pocket or one area of the organization. So it would be if the Parks Department is slightly over on their repairs and maintenance, then they would try to save money in their P&amp;G, Professional and General Services to balance that out. That's what that's supposed to accomplish. And I've also added a bunch of details on what the ways a municipality can encourage efficiencies without, while still making sure that the levels of services are being maintained. And so that we don't have managers trying to save money by changing the level of service that they are committed to by council's budget. Absolutely.
Go ahead, Counselor McGee.
The, what comes to my mind is, there was some criticism way back when I was the mayor that, and I think it was criticism that was warranted, where we would use funds from our utilities and we would, you know, take our, I'm forgetting the name of where we receive money from the utility companies, what?
Franchise fees?
Yeah, the franchise fees. And then we would plop that into wherever it became that sort of a bit of a fund to move around. And I think that was a sort of a general occurrence. And so are you suggesting that that can no longer happen?
Correct, that's what I'm suggesting. I am, but with a, you know, franchise fees, investment income. So the best practice is that an inconsistent form of revenue that could go away should not be used for general operations. Because that then, if we're using those for general operations and we are decreasing or keeping taxes lower because of that, then one year if they go away, that could significantly impact tax revenues that have to be collected that year, or it will impact a service level. So, yeah, so the short end is, yes, that's what we're trying to strategize a way where we can use that and fund. My suggestion is that those types of things either go into a capital reserve or the tax rate stabilization reserve. And so they just go there. I think for franchise fees, they should go into a capital and they should fund something in the future. Investment income, my suggestion would be to put it into the tax rate stabilization reserve. That could offset inflation in a different year, because those two in a year when, sometimes we have really high investment income and it could offset inflation in a different year, because of how they oppose each other, if that makes sense. So that is, it's not directly in here as a strategy, like we will stop using franchise fees, but it is, one of the strategies is a bit higher level, but it is to become less reliant on inconsistent forms of revenue, which can also mean grants in specific situations as well. And one of the other things in here that kind of goes hand-in-hand with that is when we get grants for a service or a program and we know that it's not going to be forever, then to have a strategy in place and how we're going to end that program one day when grants end and just have that foresight now about how that will impact the community and that it's very well communicated, that it's temporary, it's grant-funded, so that one day when that grant ends, that we have a way to communicate that with the public. So, yes.
And utilities, water rates was the same thing. Just if we're running a little low, just up the water rates, nobody's going to know, it's just there, right? And then we'll just slide it somewhere, right? But we should be conscious, and I think we are now being conscious about saying, okay, if it's coming out of utilities water sewer, that it goes back into those. And for capital projects that we have coming. I think I hear that.
Yes, yeah, so one of the big future strategies, probably the most, the biggest one, is to implement, I'm trying to think of the exact word, I'll pull it up, but a self-sustaining utilities bylaw or policy, which will speak to the fact that the revenues earned within, because the rates are direct, the rates are set based on the future capital needs. That's how the rates are calculated, to pay for future capital replacement. So when those funds are not set aside for that, then that becomes a problem when replacements are being done and we have to hold off on those replacements while we wait for funding, because it was offsetting tax revenues for years before. Most municipalities will, it's not always entirely put aside, like some will use a portion of the revenue for operations, but never all of it. There should always be the correct portion set aside for future replacement. Stealing my thunder here, Counselor McGee. Jumping ahead. No, 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 that's great. Questions are great. Just going to go through some more of the strategies that I wanted to point out. So another topic that came up last time was changing service levels as a strategy for maintaining either minimal increases in tax revenues or no increases at all in a given year. So that's always, that's very much a strategy that council can take. And that's really the strategy that it should be, is council's way of setting budget would be to, yes, we're okay with that tax increase, or no, we're not, and we're going to change service levels as, to be able to accomplish the tax rate that you guys want to see. And so I do have, it's on page 13. I have it more directly specified that it's actually a strategy on its own, and it says that all... Nope, that's not page 13. Yeah. I'll find it and then I'll read it so that it can be on the record. Service. 15, page 15? I'm losing my focus here.
No more questions, still just...
Yeah. Okay. Nope, that's not it. You know what? I'll just say it. I'll just say it, I won't repeat word for word. But that service level adjustments is a key strategy for council to be able to minimize or eliminate tax increases in a given year. And so essentially what that means is that if council is set on a specific tax increase or not, then the way we do that is by service levels, rather than cutting little bits and pieces all over the place. Really, the way that that should happen is that you say, okay, well, for roads and, we always use this one, because it's so easy to, it's an easy example, but for example, snow removal. Say like, okay, well, we're, we're going to do, Shelley? How many times do we, it doesn't matter, sorry. Let's say we do snow removal five times in a year, and council's like, oh, we don't want to do a tax increase, but it's increased, costs are increasing. You know what, we'd rather do four times a year and keep taxes low, that's the idea. So that applies all over the organization, but the problem is that in other areas, the service levels haven't been so well-defined and dollar value hasn't been accurately put to those services, so it's a little bit harder to, you know, just have that lever. And so one of the future strategies as well will be to do a service level review and to first of all, establish all the service levels. What are they? What do they cost? What does it mean to go up or down? What does that impact? So that for budgeting purposes, it's easier for council to say, okay, so we're not comfortable with that tax increase. So where across the organization are we okay with either decreasing service levels a little bit or eliminating a service altogether? That's the idea. And so first we have to do, to establish those so that we all have that common understanding of what those services are. And then after that, review them regularly, so that we know exactly what we're talking about and have an accurate thing for council to adjust. So that was the second note that I had, that I wanted to highlight from last time. And then we have also a bit more clarity around commercial versus residential. Just that council has the ability to look at those tax rates separately as a means to manage increases or manage, if you have a lot of assessment growth in one versus the other, you can manage increases separately. So you don't have to do the rates, the increases the same across the board. We have, often we have done that, just done the increases equally across, but you don't have to. It is a strategy you can take. I know last year we did speak about not increasing the commercial, just to give them a bit of a breathing room. And the idea being, of course, is economic prosperity in the town. And so I have that highlighted on page 30 as well. And then the next one was investment revenue and what to do with it, so I, we already spoke about that. And the way it can offset inflation is for the excess investment revenue to go into the tax rate stabilization reserve and then can be pulled from it in a year where we have excessive inflation and we need to manage tax increases in a year. Because, you know, like if we have a year where, I'm trying to think of one of our biggest expenses, of course, it's wages, so potentially it could be wages if you have cost of living increasing by a huge amount in a year, or, I mean, that's just one example. Or even insurance, insurance is less now, or something like that, where we can't control it. All of a sudden we just come down and you're like, you know what, insurance is going up by 10%, which we've had. And then we can say like, oh, well, we can maintain that within our budget and within the set tax rate increase levels, or we can't, and then we have reserves to pull from, just to strategize so that we can do small, consistent increases in tax revenues over time, rather than it being up and down, up and down. That's the idea.
Where was that one, Elvira? I was trying to find it.
Page 54, I believe. And then the last one that we'd spoken about specifically last time and had questions around was growth pays for growth. So the question was, does that mean growth related to inflation? And it does not, so if you read, it does specify there as well. So typically when assessment growth happens because of inflation, then our related costs to providing services likely have also increased, so the two should offset. So if we have a year where assessment growth happened, I know they don't always happen in the same year, just because housing, that's just not how it works. But the idea being that if if every, all costs increase, likely the value of your home will also increase. And so the value of your home increases, thereby your property taxes increase, but the cost of providing you the services also increase, so they offset. What growth pays for growth means is if you have development and you have more things that the town has to service, then you have that money that pays for said increases and that the town now has to maintain extra roads, extra parks, whatever that might be. I know we haven't seen a ton of growth in the last few years, but I thought it'd be important to note, because it is something that could happen and has happened in the past, where we have development and then you do have extra things you have to maintain. Does that, that answer your question, Counselor Gamanna? Yeah. And so that, those are the key things that I wanted to highlight in terms of current strategies for the most part. And again, these are, all the current strategies are of course things that we already do, but I thought it was important to put them in here so that people could understand. And this is for staff, for senior leaders. We can always point back to be like, to say like, this is why we don't do this, or this is why we're going to do this. This is the steps that we take. And the idea being, I should have talked about this a bit more at the beginning, is that they all point back to the foundational principles that will make sure that the town is sustainable. And those foundational principles are sustainability, flexibility, minimizing vulnerability. And then the secondary principles are, of course, strategic, the strategic plan, making sure that decisions we make, not just council, but also administration, making sure they do line up with the strategic priorities of council. Efficiency, equitability, and transparency. So all these strategies, the questions you always ask is, how does this strategy relate to these principles and how do we go in that direction? So that's the foundation of this whole framework. So I'm just going to quickly highlight some of the future strategies that I'm excited about and I think will be really good for the future of the town. Of course, my page is fighting with me. So we have implement a strategy to progressively increase contributions to utility reserves until the recommended annual transfer levels are reached, enabling utility surpluses to be directly used for infrastructure replacement. So we talked a bit about that previously, and it also comes along with a policy, a self-sustaining utilities policy as well. Continue to strengthen the linkage between those who benefit from town services and those who pay for them, while identifying alternative revenue sources across all areas of operations to ensure funding is appropriately allocated to infrastructure and service provision. So that means, we've talked about, especially in the last, I think, couple of years, we've talked about this. But when deciding how much the town should subsidize a service, we need to look at how many people in the town have access to that facility or service. And that's how you should calculate essentially if the town or the taxpayer should subsidize that service, if at all. And so the idea being that, you know, like recreation, yes, recreation's never going to be entirely self-sustaining. And it's been determined that it's an important service for the town. So council, of course, the town does subsidize a portion of it. But also, there's also utility fees. So yes, it's subsidized by taxpayer, but also the people that utilize it are also the ones that pay for a portion of that. And so it's not one or the other always. And that's an important consideration to make sure that the taxpayer can see the value for what their taxes are going to. The town will review and update its current investment policy to reflect best practices, evolving regulatory requirements, and the municipal's financial objectives. We do currently have an investment strategy, but it is quite out-to-date. And so I just want to update it, just to have a clear clear direction as to how investments are managed. Reserve transfers will be regularly evaluated using insights from asset management to ensure funding needs are met. So a big accomplishment of this council has been the the drive of our asset management program forward. We've just come so far in that area, which is really great. And so what needs to come alongside that is, of course, the commitment to putting the money aside that asset management, our asset management strategy is telling us to do. And so this strategy speaks to that, to make sure that we're actually using the tool for our decision-making and for future planning. And one of the other ones that I'm really excited about is the tax rate stabilization reserve. It's, it's not complicated, but it does require commitment. So money will have to go into it for it to be there, for money to be pulled out of it. So it will be a consideration at budget, of course. But I think it's an important tool for council, and it's not going to pay off tomorrow, but it'll pay off in some year to come. And so this, it's, these, some of these decisions, it's not, maybe even this council, this coming up council term, you might not see the full benefit of it. But some council term in the future will see the benefit of these decisions. So it's important, that's another important aspect to this financial planning and looking ahead. Allocate excessive investment income into the tax stabilization reserve, we've talked about that. Formalize a practice that requires a financial impact before proceeding with the construction of any new public facilities. That was, I think we were doing that, this is just formalizing it where it requires it. I think it's important to make sure that we have a proper picture of what a future facility will cost to maintain and what it looks like holistically before pulling the trigger, whether grant-funded or not, but especially if it's grant-funded. Let's see. And then another one that we talked about last time is establishing a tax levy target prior to multi-year budget. It will allow council to make decisions almost for their whole term and to look into the future, into year two, year three, and year four, and to make decisions now that will help accomplish those objectives in the following years. And so it will take us out of the making decisions just like tunnel vision, just for right now. And we're like, it's a little bit of like a survival thing, like we'll just make decisions to make the budget work this year, and then we do it all over again the next year. And then in year three, council realizes like, oh, we didn't plan for something that was super important and a strategic priority. So the idea being that in council's new term, at the beginning of it, likely a few months into the new term, the strategic planning will take place, and then that will be used to bring a three-year budget forward for second, for this coming council's second budget deliberation. And so then we can look at the projects that, programs, projects, anything like that that council wants to see, and we have a chance at actually planning for them into the years ahead. Strategic use of one-time funding sources to smooth property tax increases should be phased out. So the idea being that in council's last term, those should be phased out so that you don't tie a new council to a big tax increase, because a decision made in the last count, the last year of your multi-budget, multi-year budget. And the utility rate model we talked about. And then one of the other strategies is that Drayton Valley's tax policies should be reviewed regularly. regularly. And comparative, when we bring forward a report to council, that when we speak about what council wants to see for tax rate for the future years, we also talk about who we want to compare to, which municipalities you feel is important that we stay comparative to, under, over, whatever it might be. All that should come to council shortly into a term so that we have that information for that council term and for that multi year budget. I think that's, those are most of all of the future strategies that we want to implement. And we've talked about all the changes that I've made since the last time I brought it forward last week. So I will answer any questions now.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions now? Counselor Clark?
It's not necessarily a question. I think, you know, when you brought this to us last time, the questions were answered. And I think they're incorporated kind of as we probably foresaw them being incorporated. So I think that's great. And yeah, a lot of work went into this. And I think it's important that going forward, there's a, this framework is in place for sure, especially with, you know, four years ago, being a new council, you don't necessarily know what you're getting into. So if you have some guardrails, this certainly helps guide those people for sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Gomana?
Thank you. I agree with that comment. You know, new council, it would be nice to have those frameworks in place. Not that they couldn't change it, they of course can change it, but that would be a good starting point for them to move from there. I guess I have a quick question about this tax stabilization fund that you talked about, right? So it is it kind of, I like the idea that, you know, I think it's kind of the idea from the Alberta Heritage Savings Fund that they had where if the points goes to a tough situation that they can draw from that, right? So your proposal is to to fund that from, I guess, the growth that you mentioned. Is there an opportunity in your mind to fund that otherwise, like maybe selling off town owned land or anything like that? Or what would your recommendation if something like that happens?
I would say there are multiple ways that we can fund it. So we can fund it, and I think I mentioned it in there. I can't remember if it's specifically mentioned, but we can either do small commitments every year. For example, 1% of tax revenues or half a percent or quarter of a percent of tax revenues just goes in there for, as a rainy day fund. Or we could have excess of investment revenue. We could have, if a given year, there's operating surpluses beyond what we budgeted for, that goes in there. And so that way, when things are good and when there's savings, it goes in there. And then so it doesn't necessarily have a big tax impact in any given year to the taxpayer. But essentially savings beyond what we expected go in there is what would be my recommendation. But I didn't speak to that level of specifics in this policy because I think that there needs to be a policy that speaks to that, that council needs to pass. And to say, we want operating surpluses beyond what we budgeted for go in there, or we want, because it does, I don't want to say tie your hands, but it does direct the money to it. And that's a decision that I think should come to council. Certainly, it should be well thought out and written out and approved by CEO if none, nothing else. And so that's why I didn't have that level of specifics in there, because I do think that a policy needs to come forward to say what would be my recommendation, which is that operating surpluses are the ones that get funded into that.
No, thank you.
At least, at least some of them. Because right now, they're just, they're not, I mean, we've all heard the term, like if you don't tell your money what to do, then it's not going to work for you. And I think that's a little bit of what ends up happening is if it just, if the extra money just goes and it's sitting there, then it's easy to, in a, in a following year, it's easy just to be like, oh, well, we have some money there. Let's just use that for a project or whatever. Whereas if you target that money for a specific purpose, then it will be there for that purpose should you need it. So I do think that the operating surpluses, there should be a policy that comes forward as to how and where that goes. I know last year, was it this last year, when we had surpluses after? I think it was this last year. And we corrected it to specific reserves. Yeah. And so that way, it's just there, it's already decided that it goes into these things. And then, so that would be my, I think my recommendation is that perhaps we started off by contributing a little bit from our operating. And then going forward, it gets funded by excess surpluses. Yeah, that would be my recommendation, I think, yeah.
Okay, no. Thank you for that, and thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Yeah, we've seen that surplus and we put a little bit in everything. There was, we put some in utilities, we put some in
Fire.
Fire. There was quite a few that we, we put it in the infrastructure, sustainability infrastructure reserve. We divided it all up there. And then I believe we have three points, what, in our million in our reserves? Or, yeah, 3.6? Yeah, 3.6, 3.
We have between nine and 10 million, I believe, maybe just over.
So was it, it was 20 this year that we were able to contribute the three then?
Oh, the extra?
Yeah. Including the two plus what we were originally planning on when we passed interim budget?
Yeah.
Okay, Counselor Evans?
Are those reserves what we need to put away for the landfill, the ones you're referring to?
Yeah, like we're regulated to, is that, is that what's the question? Yes, yeah. Yeah. So I think as I, you know, the last four years, as we kept talking about reserves and where we want reserves to be and stuff like, I know that it can feel very comfortable when we say we have 10 million in reserves. And it's definitely not a bad number to be at. But the hesitance I have with that is that a fair chunk of that is for the landfill. So it's not like, there's a small portion of that is for something unexpected happens outside of that, or like a project that council wants to do. And so communicating that in a way, I hope I've communicated it properly, but communicating in a way that it makes sense, I think it's important for council and and the taxpayers, that a lot of those reserves, there still are money, it's still our reserves, but it is for closure and post closure for the landfill.
Yeah. And that's why I asked the question. I think it needs to be clear that there is a required commitment to the landfill for reclamation over many, many years after we're done with it. And we need to continue to contribute. It's required.
Yeah.
We don't have a choice. And that kind of leads me into my next comment, that as a, as a taxpayer, looking at the budget that's, that's, that's built by councils, much of the time, the mindset is you should spend the taxes you get to the last dollar. We give you the taxes, you spend them on this stuff. But without realizing how important those restricted surpluses, those reserves, aside from the required landfill ones, how important those are to take the, the severe highs and lows out of that, out of that process and create a, a situation where, where we're prepared. And as you know, I, I pushed hard for asset management. I think that also takes a lot of the, the guesswork out of those large, large financial commitments. When you're basing those decisions on real world facts about our infrastructure, whether that's a road, a water line, et cetera. And when we, when we do look at those, you're building those surpluses so you can manage those large hits when it, when it comes to you. And, and, and I just think that, that at times, when you're looking in from the outside, it's, it's sometimes a challenge to get your head around, why do they need to, to, to put this money over here and this money over there and a surplus for these, these various needs? And, and, and that's why, otherwise, boy, you run up against those giant, you know, infrastructure projects and you got to find that money from somewhere. And if you're just funding it year to year, I mean, it's, it would turn out to be a nightmare. So I just wanted to, it's just a comment, I just wanted to, to kind of clarify that side of things because I, I've heard it from people in the past and I know it's, and it's understandable, that attitude, you know? Why are you hanging on to all this taxpayers' money that we're, that we're giving you? And there's, there's a legitimate and, and logical reason for that, to make it easier for them in the years to come. So we're not chasing our, chasing our tax rate to try and match those, those significant increases. And I think it, it is important to, to make that clear and, and give the, the taxpayers clarity in that, in that regard. This is why we're doing it. It's not just we collected too much, so we're putting it over here. It's strategic in, in, in what we're collecting and where we're, where we're putting it. And I think it's much better than, you know, I heard the first year or two, we were here from a few people, the, the old kind of strategy was, you know, make it happen, the money will come from somewhere. Well, you want to know where that money is going to come from. You want to have that in place before you pull the trigger on something. And, and I, I'm, I'm glad that, that we've sort of tightened that up and, and put structure in place. And I think this, I was going to call it a policy, but this framework is important along with a strong policy that identifies our needs and what our goals are to meet those needs and, and our, our required surpluses and reserves to, to, yeah, like I say, take those highs and, and lows and smooth out that whole process. That was a little long winded, but it's my last chance.
I know. It's your last council. We let you, we let you go. And can play the music now.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. And you bring up a good point about not having too many, too much in reserves because that means that we're collecting taxpayers' money and the people now that are paying into aren't the ones benefiting, which also is why we balance debt and reserves so that it's the people that pay for it are the ones that are utilizing. So I agree, I know that we set targets for minimum reserve balances. And I think that of course, has changed over the last few years just because our, our expenses, our budgets increased, right, with the cost of everything. And so I do believe that, that communicating that very, very well to the taxpayer would be very beneficial, that we're not just hoarding tons of money for no reason at all. And it's, and it's not just, you know, an unknown amount, we're just like collecting and shoveling it away. It's targeted. We know exactly how much we need to put into the landfill. We know how, you know, a lot of our reserves or some of them are saving up for a specific purpose too. And so they're, the reserves are there to do a job, a specific job. And so I think that is important to highlight for sure.
Thank you for that, Counselor McGee.
I'll keep it short. I know. So two things jump out at me. Foundation, foundational principles, and it's not about survival. So today, as I always, you give me great confidence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that's it. Thank you for that. Yeah, wow, lovely. It is a Yeah. It is a, he's getting emotional. It's the last council meeting. Yeah, it's a fantastic job. I think this framework is going to be wonderful for, you know, future upcoming councils, just as that guiding document to tell you what it's about, how you roll things out, what's important, what's necessary. We're still putting away the, I think the tax rate stabilization reserve is fantastic that, you know, especially that we haven't been putting away for inflation and things like that. We're still putting away for that infrastructure sustainability reserve and then the utility, right? Those will kind of be additions on top of that, right?
Yeah, so we do contribute to landfill reserves consistently, a small portion to capital. A few years ago, we did, I think, 0.25% of taxes. And then we were, we were putting some reserves aside for specific projects like the Afrax radios and for the ice plant replacement. And then, and then we have some other reserves like perpetual care for the cemetery that's based, that we collect. So there's fees we collect for perpetual care that goes into reserve, small amounts, it's not a lot. And then if we're over, under, sorry, under budget on the snow removal, then the excess budget goes into it because snow removal is so hard to budget because we just don't know, mother nature gives you such unpredictable snow events in a year. So we don't want to budget like $2 million and charge the taxpayer that and then have like $500,000 and now we've overtaxed one year. So we do take an average over the years, budget that, if we don't use it, goes away. If another year we use more. So that's been working really well. The first year we did that, I think we had a lot of savings. And then last year, we pulled a little out of it so that we remained on budget. So it's been really good. And so the tax rate stabilization reserve would work in a similar way where if we have excess of investments or other things or efficiencies or operating surplus, just in general above what we budgeted, it can go in there and then it can help offset things in given year.
So the tax rate stabilization reserve goes where the operating and capital contingency reserves or the
It would be an operating contingency reserve, correct? Yes.
Okay, okay. So that's where that goes?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, fabulous document. When we look at those key principles again, at the beginning, the three of them, I just had a question, sustainability, flexibility, minimizing vulnerability, minimizing vulnerability. So what the minimizing vulnerability, when I read it, reduce exposure to risk by limiting dependence on external funding sources. This is when we're running a program that's continual and then we apply for something that maybe it's a one time grant, right? That's kind of where we talked about this. And maybe it's just me, how I read it, that it needs to be clearer in that because it's important to still be going for the grants or?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's good, but we shouldn't be relying on it. That I think is the key is that if that grant ended, it should not impact other levels of service anywhere. So if it's a, if a program that council values and wants to continue beyond a grant, then it shouldn't be paid, essentially then it shouldn't just be relied on the grant. Because what, what's going to end up happening is if that grant ends and council doesn't want to end the program, then either something else has to be taken away or taxes have to increase. So it's the, it's, it shouldn't expose or it shouldn't make us vulnerable in other areas when that funding ends. So it's, it's entirely okay to go for grants for programs. But the key is to strategize on how that program will end when the fun, funding ends and how it's going to be communicated to the public so that it doesn't impact other areas.
So, and I guess as you say, like it's in here that, is it a one time cost or will it require ongoing funding?
Yeah. So if it's, if it's something that's already a strategic priority of council, and then we need to plan for funding it when grants end.
Yeah.
It's more about looking forward and making sure that we're, when I say relying, it's not that we can't use those, it's that we can't rely on them exclusively.
So could I use the example of, let's say, the MAT program here?
Yeah.
Where it was a program that ran and then we were always on pins and needles whether we would get that grant or for the program to run?
Right. And so if, if council, if that program, yeah, so if that program was so important that council was going to fund it, whether or not we got the grant?
No matter what, yeah.
Then we should plan for that.
Okay.
While we're receiving the grant so that it does not severely impact
That we're not yet dependent on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I'm just trying to think of an example.
Yeah, for sure.
So that's why I was thinking, is that would be like the MAT program or something?
It is a little bit unique. It's when we talk about grants specifically, it's a little bit unique because we don't get a ton of operating grants that consistently, I mean, that, you know, we have a few
Yeah.
Big ones.
Yeah.
And they're usually in the social services area, right? Because it's a provincial
Yeah.
Responsibility. So that's where we usually get them.
Yeah.
So it's, it's just important to plan now, like I think for, we did put those contingencies in place for the shelter pods. So council said, if not this, then this. That's what I'm talking about, right? Planning for it now so that we're not left in Planning for it now so that we're not left in having to decide that all of a sudden in the middle of a budget year, or whatever it might be.
So that number three, the minimizing vulnerability, isn't something relatable to, say, like the swimming pool where we had put money away and we applied, you know, building a project like that, went after grants, you go after those grants, they're not continual for operations, but they're more on a, their operational basis, is that what? Or, because I'm just, I'm just, I guess I'm reading it, I think it's important, absolutely.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering how I'm reading it because I'm thinking, we apply like so many times for grants, right?
Like if, if you're, if you made a decision to go forward on something depending on a grant and that grant doesn't happen?
Then it's going to be taxpayer's debt.
Then it's putting at risk the project. Or if, if the, the business plan for a facility, like the pool, we haven't considered the operating costs. I mean, the pool's maybe not the best example only because probably very unlikely to be like, ah, shut the pool down, you know?
Yeah.
But it does now put other areas into that vulnerable category, right? Because now if we didn't properly plan for the pool and for user fees to make sure that we're subsidizing the amount that we're planning to subsidize, then something else might have to go to pay for that. That's kind of what it speaks to, is just making sure that we're properly considering things so that when this decision doesn't put at risk other service levels in the organization that people rely on.
Okay. Okay, wonderful. Are there any other questions? Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion? Go ahead, Councilor Evans.
I'll make the motion that council approve the strategic financial framework as presented.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Again, I'll just say, fantastic document. Thank you very much for your time and the work that you put into putting this together. So, good job. So there's a motion on the floor to receive this, council approve the strategic financial framework as presented. I'll now call the motion, all in favor. That is carried. And we will break for 10 minutes and then we'll reconvene and jump into our council reports and roundtable at 10:27 a.m. And we'll jump into our council reports. I know you're going to seem surprised, but Councilor Gomana, you're up.
Thank you. This time I was prepared. Exactly, right? Thank you for taking the break before the report.
Took you, took you four years or eight years, I can go with, but, excuse me.
Okay, not a, not a hauler to report. The opportunity to, to go to the, go to Dr. Burchell's 30th anniversary with a couple of fellow councillors and the mayor. And it's great to see that, you know, Dr. Burchell has given the service to our community for, for that many years. So congratulations to him and his staff. And on the 7th was an exciting day. I guess all the council was there for the dome tour. And, yeah, so we've explored the opportunity and how a dome is set up for sports and recreation. And we explored the possibilities of discussing, having something like that here further. Of course, it's very initial discussion, so there's a lot, lot to figure out. But it's exciting to have that first step taken and move forward, forward, hopefully with that, with the next council's blessing, so. But the highlight of, of the week was on 30th, as, as we celebrated our committee member Particulius, I had the opportunity to attend the Alberta Impact Awards in Calgary. It was a great night. There were many, came from different parts of Alberta there. Minister of Immigration and Multiculturalism was there, as well as the premier was there. Speaker of the House was there from, from the legislature, so had the opportunity to mix and mingle and discuss about Drayton Valley. And I was just teasing the speaker, saying that when would you come to Drayton Valley? And same as, as the premier, and it's like, oh, yeah, yeah, we will be, we will be surely visiting Drayton Valley soon enough. So, yeah, it was a great night and, and once again, congratulations to Particulius for, for that award. Yeah, other than that, as mentioned, this is the last council meeting for this council. It was an honor and privilege to, to serve the community for the last four years as well. All the very best for all the candidates running in the council, in the elections. That's in October 20th. And for the community, once again, I'm eternally grateful for having the opportunity to serve you. I hope that, you know, I've brought value and I hope that I will get that opportunity to continue providing that value forward. And hopefully I'll get that support again. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your report. Next up, we have Councilor Evans.
Okay. Once again, I'm no better prepared than I was my first report. So, GNP on October 1st, let me see. And then I attended the Yellowhead Regional Library meeting. I think most of that covered projected budget. And the budget has been forwarded to our CAO and she can share that with whoever ends up from next council on the, on the YRL board. There wasn't a whole lot that they were too worried about. There was a discussion on charter schools. They have been approached by one or two to become part of the YRL. But they indicated that that would, it's not part of, currently part of their mandate, so that would require a separate contract. So just something that's on their radar that they are looking at. So we'll probably hear a little more about that in the new year, I would think, as they need to deal with more and more of them. They also stated the provinces may be looking at what books they, they supply and whether they feel some should be taken out of circulation, similar to what happened in the schools. And their AGM will be in late November. And they have a new and updated website as well. So I think that's about all that I had from YRL. Yes, lastly, the dome tour. Yeah, exciting. I think, you know, in the end, the concern with, with bringing in a sports dome to a community was the, the cost of operations. And it seems like they've overcome that challenge. They're, they're, seem pretty efficient. Makes sense to me. And I know this, this council was, was pretty positive about it. And I'm, I'm excited to see if, if the next council is able to pull the trigger on it and make it happen. I think it'd be a great, a great addition to our, our community. And that's my report. And I guess lastly, I'll, I'll just say, it's, 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 it's been a pleasure and an honor to be part of this council. Thank you to staff. You have my respect. And it's been, it's been a pleasure working with you. Yeah, thanks for putting up with me.
Oh, Councilor McGee. I don't think your mic was on. Did you want to repeat that?
Always one in the crowd.
I think I'm going to start with the, I think we reported on it, but I wanted to say, when we went to the Truth and Reconciliation, the Orange Shirt Day at the Roots of Resilience, one of the things that I asked our elder, Alice, about why they start the, some of their conversations, not all of them, but some of their conversations is that we'll, we'll speak in a good way. We'll speak in a good way. And I thought, outstanding way to, to, to look at that. And then we talked about the tobacco and the, you know, all of the medicines that they use. And, and I think in the end, she said that we're in an awesome community. And at some time, I think it wasn't awesome for, for, for folks, such as the Indigenous and the Métis, but she, she's there. She's feeling good about it. So we've done some great things. And so I wanted to, I don't think I mentioned it last time, but I thought that was an outstanding piece for me on the Truth and Reconciliation Orange Shirt Day. I also had an opportunity to go to the Warehouser Giving Fund. So Warehouser gives out a certain amount of funds. They have a committee that they struck to give out those funds. And it was, it was really, we were in their, their boardroom and Matt Snow was the, was the lead hand. And, and they had, you know, checks and things to give out and they did all of that. And it was, it was great. It was great. And we, some of the questions from the folks that were there were questions like, so how many people work here? Well, we have 300 here and 300 here and another 300 there, so it's between 700 and 900 at any given time. And so really, they're the biggest employers in, I think you, you mentioned it yesterday in some of your conversation, Rick, but the biggest employers. And it was, it was very, very good. Good spot for me to be. They, they said thank you to me particularly. And they made me a employee for the day.
Oh, wow.
But then I had to go for a line, so.
Hard to find good help.
I know. Out for a cigarette, I gotta go.
He's got fires.
So that was really, really good. The, the Warehouser Giving Fund. And the Dr. Burchell thing, it was, it was classic. And going up the steps, and I remember going up the steps 30 years ago, and they're steep. They're steeper now, but they were steep, and I thought. And, and as I'm opening the door to go up, there's a girl coming out crying, with cotton coming out of her mouth, and I thought, oh, oh my God, what's going on up there? And then dentist shop, right? It was just a classic thing, crying. She was just crying. And then he says, it was a much-to-do-about-nothing. Dentists are very, very difficult. But anyway, Dr. Burchell, 30 years in our community. And Jamie is, he's married to Jamie. And Jamie grew up in Drayton Valley. Her father, John, owned the Twin Dragons. And so there was a customer came in and I had a chat with him and he says, I remember when she danced in her white dress at the restaurant. Those kinds of things are just unbelievable. So we had good fun. And, and it was one of those expectations that I thought, okay, yeah, nice to see you, goodbye, right? But it was way more than that. It was very, very good. Out of a simple thing like saying thank you. Dome tour, also highly unusual. I thought, okay, I'm, I'm expecting something that's going to be cindical and I've seen them, you see one dome, you've seen them all. And, but it was, it was different and it was very, very, very good. And I think we're going to set up an opportunity for some of our staff to, to go. I know that's coming up. And so, but, but it was, it was really, it was really good. I, I think there's all kinds of potential there. And so we'll watch for that as you guys ponder that. And lastly, if, if we're going there, and I, I'll go then. So, let me say thank you.
Dig deep.
Yes, let me say, thank you to, to all of you, mayor, council, and our finest administration. You've all been patient, kind with my data and my questions. You've allowed me to be part of this tremendous team. Sorry. I look forward to the election to come. There's much to do and the decisions will be hefty. And I have no doubt that the next four years will be exciting with a new team, with a top-notch administration. I, I have great, great confidence. And I wanted to tie in each of you as well. So I want to say thank you to Emila for courage, enthusiasm, and your passion to assist and welcome any newcomers to our community. Outstanding. Colin, for your quiet wisdom, asking the right questions at the right time, digging deeper with knowledge. Monica, thank you for your steady hand, your courage to say what needs to be said despite the political correctness. No BS. Rick, thank you for probing questions. We all know when you get excited about a project, sewage disposal, landfill changes, lanterns on the pond, sustainability, as early as yesterday, wondering, how might that seem and that dome work? I thought, it's uncanny, he just goes there, right? I, I thought it was very, very good. And I was, I chuckled to myself. I thought, oh, he's going to dig into that. Great. And you will be missed. Madam Mayor, your worship, thank you for your unwavering love of our community. We all understand the need for budgets and taxes. That all can be done with kindness and understanding, recognizing the need to be flexible and react and provide solid leadership. Always you listen and care. Our community is in good hands. Amen.
What does the headline say?
Thank you, Tom. Thank you for making us all cry, having that beautiful, beautiful final council report. Councilor Clark, top that off.
Well, yeah, I'm not looking to make anybody cry. Yeah, so the dome, the dome tour, I think, was kind of the highlight of the last little bit here and pretty exciting thing. And, yeah, lots of work to do, like you said, Councilor Gomana. And yeah, and lastly, it's been an absolute pleasure, I think, working with everybody here. I'd be remiss not to say we do definitely miss Bill, you know? And certainly administration, I think everybody's top-notch, like you said, Tom. And everybody gives a, really gives a damn about this town, so it's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Deputy Mayor, Sheriffs.
After Tom's, my little scribbles, I don't think they'll do anything. Thank you, Tom, and thank you all of you. I agree. To your point about the Truth and Reconciliation meeting, I sat at the circle with a knowledge keeper named Mike, and he was talking about smudging in the morning and how, when he does, it's, he does the eyes and the mouth and the ears to hear better, to listen better, communicate better, feel better. And for me, it's, it actually hit because, you know, most of us get up in the morning and just make our bed, make our coffee, we head to work. But if he just took those few seconds to actually just do that, today I'm going to listen better, look better, feel better, just, I don't know, it, it just hit me. And I've been trying to do that ever since. So that was a really wonderful day spent learning a few things from elders and knowledge keepers. And to echo everybody's, Dr. Burchell's 30-year anniversary and the dome tour, that was fantastic. We learned a lot and very hopeful for what the future of this town has to bring, future council. As for being on the council, it's definitely been a learning experience. I, I have gotten to know all of you quite well and hope to work with you in the future. But if not, you know, I really hope we stay friends because it's been, it's been interesting. It's been a blast. And it's also, we've been through ups and downs and absolutely loved every minute of it. And it's also, we've been through ups and downs and absolutely loved every minute of it. So, thank you all.
Thank you for that. Wow, a very emotional last council report. So, I'm not going to cry. I haven't even started. So, yes, I attended the AFPA conference as a guest of Warehouser. That was in Jasper. So, it was my first time heading to Jasper since the wildfires. And wow, I can't believe the devastation there, the forest and behind the lodge. It was quite a surprise to see that and just unbelievable. They did a fantastic job, you know, saving what they could of the community and the history of the lodge and everything. So, yeah, it was very, very surreal and eye-opening. Every time I, you know, attend anything with Warehouser, I, I learn more about the industry. I learn more about how important, you know, they are in contributing to our community. They're climbing up when it comes to the GDP in Alberta. They're at $7 billion. They were quite below oil and gas. And now you're seeing that they're going up, up and up. And, you know, the jobs that they provide in the community, they trickle down, you know, their spouses, their families usually work in childcare and healthcare, in school teachers. They shop in a retail store, support our local entrepreneurs. So, it's fantastic to see that and to see that relationship build. There was quite a few ministers there, and the premier was there, I think, just to show the support and, and the love of Jasper. I had an opportunity to, to speak with the ministers and to speak with the premier about how important the industry is here in our community. And, and, you know, to talk about sustainable forest management and what that looks like when, you know, we're removing the trees and things like that and ensuring that there's, there's jobs. So, thank you to Warehouser for that opportunity. Again, I attended the Truth and Reconciliation. It was a lovely event. I was only going to stop by briefly, and I ended up staying for the whole thing. And it is a reminder of, you know, to just to treat everyone, you know, as you want to be treated and to treat others with kindness and respect and how our community is awesome, as Alice had said, right? She used that word quite a bit. So, she's an outstanding lady, her and her sister. We kicked off our third mayor's task force meeting. And out of that is coming a, I believe Cody and Vanessa and John went out yesterday to get a bin at the encampment at the landfill. So, we'll see, hopefully, that area being tidied up there. They wanted the, the opportunity and the ability to do it themselves rather than hire a contractor. So, we said, let's do Plan A. Let's put a bin out there. I believe some volunteers are going to head out in a couple of days as well and assist with moving the debris out. So, that's happening this week out there, as well as there's some comms pieces, accurate communication pieces that'll be coming out in the coming weeks, rather than getting your information from social media or my opinion page. So, watch for those. Spread the news about what are the accurate numbers and information. There's between 30 to 35 individuals out there, not 100 or 150. And I ask everyone to be compassionate and, and, you know, give these individuals dignity and respect. I know that we don't like it, and it frustrates us and makes us angry, but they're still residents of this community. So, we have to work together to come up with solutions. I had my first meeting for the Regional Advisory Council. So, that's with the province of Alberta. Looking forward to sitting on this council and having an opportunity to drive up our issues and challenges when it comes to healthcare in our community. So, we'll be kind of deciding what's happening there, next steps, and how we're going to get that input from each and everyone's community and then drive it up to the, to the minister and the premier. So, that's exciting. Celebrated my youngest daughter's 18th birthday last Friday. So, we headed out to the Notting Donkey and welcomed her to adulthood. So, now even more stress. It never stops. So, yeah, happy birthday to her. Attended Dr. Burchell's 30-year anniversary. It was exciting. And, and, you know, I just want to say congratulations to brightening our smiles in our community for over 30 years. He said he's going to be sticking around for many, many more years. He's got a, a young fella at home still, so he wants to keep working and see him go through school here. So, congratulations to him. Thank you to him and his team there. Congratulations as well to Barty on her Alberta Award and everything that she does and stands for in our community. A shout out to her. I also want to say, you know, if you're out and about in the community, head on down to our downtown and shop with our local shops downtown. We have some construction going on there. Sidewalks are still open. You can park in the back. So, we don't want to drive business away from our downtown core. So, if you have an opportunity, stop by those shops. I know one of them is having, celebrating 88 clothing, their second year anniversary. So, exciting week for her. And then I want to thank council. Thank you for your service, for your dedication, your compassion, your commitment, for your leadership and guidance and knowledge, for taking me under your wing and showing me what it's like to be mayor and, and the ropes and connecting with the community. I've truly appreciated working with you, some for two councils, some for one, getting to know you. We've been through some historical challenges. Started off with a pandemic and a wildfire and evacuation and the loss of a beloved counselor. And we still managed to, to pull quite a bit off. So, thank you for that. Thank you for those that are putting your name in forward. I wish you the best of luck. I'm confident you'll, you'll do amazing things and you'll continue to strive in the excellence that you have. And to those that aren't running again, thank you. I wish you the best of luck in your next adventure, wherever it takes you. I know that our paths will cross again, and you'll probably be in the gallery heckling and, and challenging the next incoming council. It's been a pleasure working with you. I've learnt so much. Rick, I've had the pleasure of working with you both at the county, on the administrative side, and now as the councillor. So, thank you for your wisdom and your knowledge and, and helping with those decisions when it comes to, to infrastructure and everything you do and for guiding that boat at the lanterns on the pond year after year. It's, it's been, it's been so much fun, teaching us the monkey dance on our first year of A lot of great memories. And for Tom, again, for your guidance, for your leadership, for showing me how it's done and being there when I need it. You, thank you very much. For you and to Sheila. And I know that we'll see you around and we'll still be crossing paths and continuing to drive this community forward in one way or another. So, thank you for that. And of course, to our administrative team, we wouldn't be here and we wouldn't be the community we are if it wasn't for you. So, thank you for all that you do, for putting up with our pushing and pulling and, and complaining and, and driving up the residents' voices and issues, because that's what it's about, right? We're here to be the voice of the community. So, thank you for listening to us and for taking those, you know, issues and challenges seriously and, and, you know, challenging us sometimes to say, well, you can't do it this way, do it this way. And, and, you know, not giving in and saying yes all the time. I respect your opinions. I respect your decisions. And I respect when you say, maybe look at it from this point of view, or, or to give that advice. I, I appreciate the advice and the guidance and the hard work that you've put in. And I know as an elected official and as a member of, of local government or any level of government, you have a target on your back. And people can be sometimes not the kindest. So, it takes a toll on your mental health. It takes a toll on sometimes coming into work every day. And so, for that, I say thank you. You're doing a fantastic job, and thank you for that. So, this is the final meeting. I'm going to end it there before tears start to shed. So, is there a member of council that would like to pass a motion to accept our final council reports as information? Counselor Gomana, thank you very much for that. That wraps up our council reports. We have no department reports today, and we'll jump into 11.1, our final roundtable I have a few things. I've got to keep administration on their toes just a few more times. Okay, so I've been out and about in the community and then receiving some messages. First up, Aspen View Pond. I know that I've brought this up before, and I walked by last night as well. I've been talking to some residents in the area. It's really grown over on the north end. And one of the gentlemen said that he was worried that it's causing a backup of drainage or something going on there. It's like there's a whole bunch of islands happening. What's happening?
Good morning, council. Madam Mayor, members of council. Thanks for the question. So, yes, the north side of the pond is the inlet to the pond. So, that's where you're going to see majority of your solids kind of settle. I don't see any issue at the current moment with flow coming in. Everything seems to be draining adequately within our storm system. We have recognized that solids are an issue within Aspen View Pond, and we'll be bringing back a budget item for deliberation.
Okay, perfect. So, you are on it there, yeah. I walked last night, and you can see it's like, there's like a whole bunch of islands there. It looks like pond's going to close up there at that end. So, that we'll be coming back for November's budget discussions for that?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. Something else I, another complaint I've received, and this has been brought up before in the past, and I can't remember what we said we were going to do or what was the issue. But the line painting to the east side of the thrift store, years ago, we just used to have two lanes, one coming and going, and then we ended up with that extra lane. And, and it's kind of wonky there.
Oh, that's heading eastbound.
No, 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 no. So, it's heading like north to south, but it's on the east side of, yeah, the thrift store.
Oh, yes, yes.
54th Street, thank you.
Yes, so when you look at that intersection, it's a little complicated. The north side of that intersection is quite wider than the east or the south side of that intersection. So, the alignment is due to the width of the roads and not being accurate on both sides. But until we do a reconstruction job on 54th, heading south, there's not really any way to remedy that issue. So, there will be a bit of a jog over to get to the straight through until we widen that section of the road.
And currently, there's not a need or a reason to widen it?
No. I mean, the road, there, there's some issues with the road to the south. However, there's ways that we can mitigate full reconstruction, which is quite costly, which we'll be bringing that to budget as well.
Okay, okay, perfect. Thank you for that. Another thing was the seniors, I don't know if you call them condos or townhouses across from Seasons, that whole development up in there with the grudges and the houses. It's kind of a unique, I never knew it was there before, but there's the townhouses all the way around. And in the middle of them is this green space, and it's actually really beautiful. And all these homes back on there, but the grade isn't the best, and then the drainage. And I guess it's been an ongoing issue, and it's been brought to the attention quite a few times. And I think now they said that they're dealing with Jen Garrick, which is wonderful, that they finally feel like they're getting some traction. Is there any chance that that drainage will? Because I know if you go a little bit more to the east, there's actually a cement one that runs in between the homes. And we were just talking, wondering if that shouldn't be happening there too.
So, we did look at this. We did get the request. Last year, I got a request, not for drainage, but for it not being maintained, which is town property. I didn't even know it existed until last year either. So, we did start putting that on our rotation and making sure that it was, it was cut. This year, they did bring forward the drainage issue. So, we sent out our surveyor, and we surveyed the area, and we definitely can see the issue with the drainage, not necessarily requiring a concrete swale in there, but some, some dirt work needs to be done in there to get some positive drainage. It is on our list. Our hope is to get to it this year before winter hits, but our workload's quite hefty right now. So, we didn't make any promises for this year, but saying that next year, it will be addressed for sure.
Okay. And then, so can we just stay on top of the communication then with whoever Jen is in contact, just so they know that we don't get to her this next year, that it is on for next?
Yeah, and I believe Jen has communicated that as well.
Oh, she has? Okay, perfect. Wonderful. Go ahead.
Interestingly enough, somebody brought that up to me yesterday. And they suggested that green space was actually meant to be more than what it is. So, they were asking me, so what was, you know, originally, what was the design for it? I don't know, never seen it. So, I don't know if there was anything that wasn't done there from the developer's side. I'm wondering if there's, you know, I'm just wondering if this isn't a town cost as if it's a developer cost.
Well, originally, I thought that, but then I thought, because of the drainage and the green, I was just assuming it would probably be as part of the ASP that was developed, that it would be our green space? Or?
But that's quite possible. I'll look into the planning records and kind of dig a little bit further into that one.
Yeah, so anyway.
Lovely area. I never knew the same thing that existed there.
Yeah, I don't know if you can really get in there, can you?
Yeah.
You've got to walk on the...
So, I mean, everyone, there's quite a few homes, they can all access it coming. There's actually a little fire pit there, and sometimes they, you know, get together and they take turns mowing it. But you can access it from, I guess, the west end, and then the south end, there's a little break, I guess. Little right away, I guess, kind of small, where the drainage goes down, yeah.
Yeah, there's two easements to access.
Thank you, easements. That's what I meant.
I was digging around a couple of years ago, and it was, because the water started to pond, there was a lot of, it was obvious to have that. It was, in fact, meant to be bigger and broader, and the developer at the time didn't actually do it, what, what, and we didn't put enough pressure on to have something done. And it, so it's there, and it's a problem. And it's not a serious problem, but it's serious enough where people are, want something done. So, I don't think, seemed to me, my communication at that time, it didn't look like we could go back to the developer, because the, I think that's all been finished. And there's anything that's going to be further developed, which it is being further developed, is being done by different developers, buying the land and doing that, so.
The conditions would have been, you know, signed off on, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. But anyway, that's, that's from my...
Yeah, it's funny how you live in a community for so long and you don't know where, you find a whole new area, and you're like, wow.
After looking at the survey data, like, it's not a significant amount of work that needs to be done in there. So, I mean, it's nothing that we couldn't take on in-house to remedy.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, thank you for that.
Can I just decide, so, and the pond, Seasons Pond, I could call it that. There is some sort of conversations going on about, it's, the bow rushes are really growing.
Oh, I did hear that too.
And the, the other thing is that there, there is a lease road that goes along there, and, and somebody said, hey, why don't you lock that off? So, I said, well, there's a well down there. They got to check it still, right? But it was a grumpy day for that particular person. He said, there's no well down there. I don't know if there is a...
There is, yeah. There is, yeah. Ricochet.
You walk down there all the time.
I don't know. Why do I think there's a pump check?
I don't believe there's a pump check, but it is a ricochet.
Thinking somewhere else.
Lease.
And then I have one more is, a lady decided to call me up 5:00 AM again and wake me up because her, she was having garbage removal at 5:00 AM behind the town office. So, is that right? And we don't have authority or control over that.
No, those are privately owned bins, so it wouldn't have been us that was doing that.
I know, she called me for a snow removal, I think, at 3:00 in the morning. Yeah, that was the lady. So, this is the one that called me now to wake me up.
Yeah, so I would assume that would be a call to the, to waste management, whoever owns the bins back there.
That's what I thought.
To ask if they could not do it that early.
Not pick that up, okay. I'm going to call her tonight at 3:00 in the morning, just to say, hi, I'm up, just going through, finishing up my emails. And I'm not saying that to be mean or facetious, but it is, I get crazy calls at all hours. I get people to pick them up from the bar at 2:00 to 3:00 AM in the morning. I get, yeah, weather, snow removal. That's Rick, yeah. Yeah. So, okay, I wanted to just double-check on that. And then finally, I didn't include it in my report, was, yes, the dome, the dome tour yesterday. Absolutely fantastic. I know we need to further the discussion and conversations. There is a new council coming in. So, I guess they'll determine if those conversations proceed, yeah. Because there was quite a few questions that came out of the tour yesterday, you know, like operating costs, what the potential of the floor plan of that could look like, you know, speaking to the users groups, getting that engagement in the community and all and all of that. So, that'll be left with administration. So, thanks, everyone, for coming. And it would be exciting to see something like this come to fruition in the community. I know that the talk of a field house has been out there for years and years, and this would be the field house in a sense, except a dome. So, it was nice to see this newer technology. And does anybody else have anything for roundtable discussions?